Before we start this evening, I just wanted to have a moment of silence for Joe Toscano, who's a member of the Fire Department for the Town of Watertown. He's also a local resident here in neighboring Randolph. First order of business is minutes from regular session, Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, February 8.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular session of Wednesday, February 8, 2017.
Second. Second by Mr. Lee, all those in favor? With one abstention. We also have the minutes from that same meeting on February 8 for the executive session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the executive session of Wednesday, February 8, 2017.
Second.
On the second, all those in favor?
One abstention.
Three abstentions. At every meeting, we do have an opportunity for citizens to voice any concerns they might have. Mr. Greeley, how are you tonight?
Good.
Excellent. Perfectly fine. If you just want to just announce yourself for the audience and people at home.
Chuck Greeley, 214 Wayman Street, Precinct 2. I read an article in the Holbrook Sun about the proposed sale of a parcel of land up on, which is right now considered the town forest, but is actually a parcel land that's in tax title with the town. And I also read in the article that the, one of the buyers who's interested says that he will, he wanted to keep a majority of the parcel open space if he were to buy it. And I wanted to know how that could be legally enforced in perpetuity.
I don't have the technical or legal definition. I know that the town administrator, Tim Gordon, had spoken with town council and said that it could be done, that we can word the sale. For anyone who's purchasing it, these are the restrictions that would be, would have to be enforced, and that would be legally binding. It isn't worth, my understanding is that the property isn't worth really much to anyone because of where it's situated. So there really is only one buyer at this, at this time. And so he's talked not only with town administrator, but also the Forest Committee in regards to, you know, what the potential plans are to help work through anything. So he still has to, the land still has to go to auction, it still has to be purchased, it's supposed to be purchased by him, but it would be protected that anyone who purchased it, if it was someone beyond that individual, would be subject to the same kind of criteria with the land or the use of land.
So if somebody other than the buyer who's showing all the interest bought the land, that same protection would be there?
Correct, correct.
And if the buyer who, the person who's probably going to buy the land, if he decides to sell later on, that protection, sell that portion of it later on, that protection would still also be there?
Exactly, because that was the, that was a criteria that was in place for the purchase.
Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Great, yes. And the same as, Mr. Greeley, your name and your residence?
Yes, my name is Edward O'Keefe, 55 Loud Road, here in town, Holbrook. Yes, and this is also in regards to the 32-acre apostle. That land, you know, would have restricted deed on it. Now, I was, and I've heard over and over again that it would be five to six acres tops that he'd be using. Now, in the article that was put in the Holbrook Sun, it said 400 units.
Yes.
Now, with the, with the wetlands, okay, and the zoning and the buffer zones for the habitat, it's going to take a lot more than that, especially with five-story buildings.
I think you're misunderstanding. He also owns other property.
Okay, yeah.
So this would be in addition to the property that he already owns?
Yeah.
And so the five acres, however he's cutting it out-
Yeah.
-in his planning, is, that's, that's how it's being worked.
Okay.
So he's not building the 400 units on five acres. It's in a dis, it's in addition to, but he really needs the land, is my understanding, to get some credit for keep not developing. There's credits that developers can get for not developing all the land. So if you leave a certain percentage open, that bodes well. I'm not sure how, if it's a tax break on, at the state level, or how it actually works. And so that's the reason why he's looking for the additional land. He needs a little bit to be able to complement what he has currently, and the rest would be open space and used for, for anyone who wanted to enjoy it as de facto part of the town forest, without being part of the town forest.
But you guys were weird.
And he would still pay taxes, and everything would still be paid on it.
It does, it sounds great in theory, but you guys were weird of this guy's track record over the years.
Well, since he's not, since he's not here, I don't want to discuss-
Yeah, I do, okay, and that's right. He doesn't, he doesn't seem to show up in any of these things.
Okay, no.
I don't want to be out of order.
No, no, I understand. If he was here, we could have a debate about it, but since he's not here to defend himself.
Okay, yeah, that's right. I don't want to really be out of order, but yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, if he, he's not really showing up at these things publicly, you know, he's doing this.
And no worries, he, he's not, he's not asked to. I think, my understanding is that he's shown up to the conservation and the planning, all the, all the meetings he's expected to plan for. He's here, he's not just at a general selectman meeting, because, you know, he's not on the agenda, you know, in this, in this particular case, so.
Now, there is-
But he will be at some point, and obviously you can address-
Is information open to the public about the possible plans, whether he, you know, possibly even tried to have an entrance on Pine Street and Wayman Street?
I don't, I don't know what is-
Any type of information and possibilities be open to public?
Yeah, no, it would be, and that would be with the planning, it would be with the planning board at this, at this point in time.
Okay, I'm just going to, we just want to, we want to keep on top of it.
Sure.
And I thank you very much.
We do as well. No, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Keefe.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No? We do have a couple of open, I'm sorry, communications and announcements. So Holbrook Counseling on Aging has a guest speaker. It's going to be Norfolk County Register of Deeds, William P. O'Connell, O'Donnell, who will be with us on Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:00 a.m. So this will take place at the Counseling on Aging, which is at 9 Jewell Road, just across the way. It'll be a short speaking program to touch on the historic nature of the Registry of Deeds, and members of his staff will also be available to assist with information about the Massachusetts Homestead Act. On-site workstations will be available, and to provide the status of mortgage discharge, print a copy of your deed, provide demonstration on how the online land records database works. So that will be the Register of Deeds, William O'Donnell, will be here in Holbrook on April 4th, 10:00 a.m. at the Counseling on Aging. So we do appreciate his, his assistance to reaching out to his constituents. We also have a save the date for Sunday, April 30th. This is from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is a, the last chance to walk through the Holbrook Junior/Senior High School. So it's educated 60 years' worth of Holbrook youth, and this summer, the building will be razed to make way for part of the new complex that is being built behind it. So it's the last opportunity to, to walk through the building. There'll be more details on this, but it's just a save the date, April 30th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. That is a Sunday. Fuel assistance applications are available through the Holbrook Community Development Office and the Town Clerk's Office. So you can pick them up also at the Holbrook Library in the Counseling on Aging. The hours of operation for community development are Monday through, Monday and Tuesday from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So again, applications for the fuel assistance program through the Holbrook Community Development Office are available. We do have a, an announcement from the Holbrook Cultural Council. So students aged seven to 17 are invited to join the Holbrook Cultural Council on Saturday, April 22nd, from four, I'm sorry, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Holbrook Winthrop Congregational Church for a day of singing, dancing, and acting, concluding in a late afternoon presentation for friends and family. So participants will be divided into groups based on age and experience. If you want more information, you can email 02343-C, the letter C, the letter C, at gmail.com. So 02343-CC at gmail.com. There is a modest fee, $35, to help cover costs. Registration is April 15th. So this is, program is led by the Holbrook Cultural Council and theater educators, Dory Bryan Poller and Jennifer Sterling. Participants will spend the day rehearsing and practicing, and theater artists will use the skills that the theater artists will use to perform onstage. So this is a great event on April 22nd, from 9:00 to 4:00, with a presentation at the end. So for more information, you can contact the Holbrook Counseling, Counseling on Aging, or that email address, 02343, the letter C, the letter C, at gmail.com. Okay. Marjorie, do you have anything for us as far as updates? No? Okay. All right, we do have a hearing, an open hearing at 7:15, so we do have a little bit more time before that. So one of the items that we do have on our agenda is to vote to authorize the chairman to execute the memorandum of understanding between the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the Town of Holbrook, which has been named as a participating community in the LED streetlight rapid retrofit grant program. So Mass. General Law, Section 164, 34A, allows for municipalities to purchase the streetlights that we have in our, in our district. And we are, have a grant available to us for $77,404.88 that will allow us to have the streetlights. We will be purchasing those lights using Chapter 7, Chapter 90 money, and coordinating, hopefully with Braintree Electric to help with maintenance and entering into a maintenance contract with them. We've discussed this before, but for those who aren't familiar, there is a, there's a great payback on this. Typically, we get, I believe it's about, our streetlight budget is $165,000 annually. That includes electricity as well as maintenance. And so we pay the maintenance on about $50,000, so that goes to maintenance. So there would be a tremendous amount of savings from the maintenance side, because the LEDs are very efficient and typically have a 10- to 12-year lifespan. And so we'll be able to save the costs associated with the maintenance that we're currently paying, and be able to manage that a little bit better. And with all the different incentives that are in place, we're looking at, you know, a $315,000 project paying for itself in two and a half years. And then after that, it would be, all the savings would go right to the bottom line. So we're looking at authorizing myself to execute that memorandum of, of understanding. Does any of the board have any questions in regards to that? This is the third or fourth time we've talked about it, so I think we're all pretty familiar with it. So I want to entertain a motion if you have it available.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the chairman to execute a memorandum of understanding by and between the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the Town of Holbrook, which has been named a participating community in the LED streetlight retrofit grant program in the amount of $77,404.88.
I second that. All those in favor? Excellent, great, thank you very much. Okay. Next item is a vote to award the, in bid for the purchase and installation of 10 computers with the Police Department Cruiser Fleet. Chief, do you want to briefly update us on, on this?
Good evening. This was a grant that we applied with, jointly with Steve Hook and Dispatch out of 911. It's for laptops for the cruisers. They're state-of-the-art laptops. They have printers in them, they're detachable, so you can take them out and go into a house and write on them, or put them back in. The keyboards float in the car, so they're not just stationary right there. You get real comfortable when you're writing reports and stuff.
Sure.
So the grant, the items cost almost $70,000, so we had to put it out for bid, and-
Is that for the 10?
10, yes.
Okay.
And installation and everything.
Sure.
And only one company applied within time, time parameters, and it was PC Patrol.
And how long do they last? When these, if these get installed in 2017, are they good for three years, or are they good for-
Like eight years, eight to 10 years.
Eight to 10 years, good. Do you have any questions for Chief?
Nope.
No. Where, where did the grant come from?
Steve Hook did the grant through 911, and we kind of piggyback on him. He helped us do it.
Nice job.
I move that the Board of Selectmen award the bid for the purchase and installation of 10 computer laptops for the Police Department Cruisers, Cruiser Fleet, to Advance Electronics Design Inc. in the amount of $69,400.
Second by Mr. Lee, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much for the work on it. Appreciate it, Director Hook, thank you. All right, it's 7:15, we do have a public hearing, so I need that the Board of Selectmen open the hearing on the application of Carline Inc., DBA Corner Pizza, for a common vic license at 2 South Franklin Street. And- Great. Is anyone here for Carline? How are you?
Good.
Great, if you wouldn't mind just telling us who you are?
My name is Shirina Meen.
Okay.
And I live in 27 Jones Road in Berlin. Me and my husband, we want to buy the business. My husband and I work for pizza stores, like we work, we have a pizza store. We used to like buy business, you know, and we worked in pizza for a long time.
Okay, all right, good. And so do you currently own other, other businesses, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, how many other businesses do you own?
One.
Just one other. So you keep that, so you operate two simultaneously?
Yeah.
Okay. Is the other one located in this general area? Because I know Berlin, you live in Berlin, which is a little bit further, further out there.
Yeah, no, it's inland.
Okay.
So we, we used to, I mean, we used to it, like, to go far away, so it's okay.
Okay. The only reason why I ask is just, you know, the ability to have the owner, you know, at the property, you know, and, and working in the business.
Yeah, we have like a partner in the other store, so, you know, like, when we buy this one-
Okay.
-he will cover us for like a little while-
Okay.
-until we establish everything, you know, like, know how to manage everything, and then we're going to sell the, the other store for him. Like, he will get the other half, so.
Okay. Good, any questions for Ms.? Okay, any gentleman? No? Excellent.
Have you brought it yet?
Not yet, we're waiting for the, for the meeting, so.
Waiting for it, okay.
Yes, yeah. We can't buy it without, you know, making sure that you are-
Sure.
I move that the Board of Selectmen open, oh, you already did. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the application of Carline Inc., Doing Business as Corner Pizza, for a common vehicle license at 2 South Franklin Street.
Okay, we have a motion. Second by Mr. Sheehan, all those in favor? Excellent, great, welcome to Holbrook, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, yes, unless you want to stay, it's going to be riveting. Okay. Good night. All right, we do have, we do have two more minutes before the next, the next hearing. Chief, do you have anything from an update standpoint that-
Okay, I don't know if you saw in the paper about the big raid that happened in Randolph yesterday. We were part of that, we had three officers involved. We're part of the social drug task force, that's why we were brought in. It worked out well, and nobody was hurt. They had a lot of arrests, 16 arrests, and 10 guns were confiscated, plus a lot of cash and drugs. Last night, we had an armed robbery at the doctor's office at, we had 169 North Franklin Street. Person walked in, sat down, talked to the receptionist, like she wanted to fill out some paperwork. She took the paperwork, and she walked up, grabbed the pocketbook, put a knife at the person, and took off. We quickly put a BOLO out. Vehicle was seen in Braintree, stopped by Social Plaza. She was taken into custody. We brought the victim over there, she ID'd the suspect, and she was held overnight and brought to court today. Holbrook officers also assisted, they're part of the Metelec MOP team, which did the wake over Randolph yesterday. Two motorcycles were over there, there was 16 bikes in total. We're proceeding with our Senior Citizens Academy, and response has been great, the slots are filling up quickly. We're probably going to have to run another one, because everybody wants to be a part of it, so.
That's great.
And lastly, Officer Martins and Officer McGregor will be receiving the Dana Award at Quincy District Court on May 2nd, for an incident with a suicidal man who had a knife to his throat last April. You guys actually gave him a citation for that last April, but they're going to get the Dana Award also this year.
Fantastic. Great, there's anything for Chief?
Chief, can you guys get fundraisers coming up?
Yes, I'm not sure of the exact date.
I think it's April 9th.
April 9th.
I believe it's April 12th.
At The Brook, yep.
Yes, April 12th.
April 12th, maybe?
April 8th.
April 8th.
Saturday.
Saturday night.
More details to follow.
Yeah.
Busy 8th.
So April, April 8th at The Brook.
Yes.
Very good.
Those dogs are totally funded by fundraisers.
By fundraisers, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. All right, it is 7:20, so we'll reopen the public hearing on the Eversource Energy Walpole to Holbrook, 115 KV Reliability Project. This hearing was opened on March 8th. Does it have a motion?
Sure.
Great, thank you. We have, we were told in advance that several of the individuals couldn't make it for this, for this hearing, both on, on our side as well as the Eversource side. Elaine, you're here. I don't know if, if you wanted to say anything, or I know that we got some information from, from you in regards to other projects that Eversource has been involved with, of this nature, that we needed to be aware of. And so I know I read the information, and I'm sure the rest of the board did, and we thank you very much for that. Is there any questions for Ms. Highland in regards to, to that information? No? You're, you're welcome to speak if you, if you wish. You know, it's unfortunate that Eversource isn't here, and, you know, so.
Right, that's why we wanted to continue, and I understand that, and that's, that's fine. But again, Elaine Highland, I live at 33 Damon Avenue in Holbrook. I just wanted to give you an update, that I did attend the, the Stoughton Public Hearing last week, just as a, as a, you know, information-
Yeah.
Yeah, just I wanted to see what was going on there. And, and I know I mentioned before that they had a lot of landscaping mitigation issues, so that is ongoing. And then I did learn that there was a lot of concern with the traffic flow, because they're having streets that are being crossed like, like we are here. So they had issues with-
Concerns with traffic flow during the installation?
Yeah, during the construction and the whole bit of the project. And then one bigger concern was the EMF emissions. There was a lot of individuals that had stood up and spoke about that. So all in all, it was, it was enlightening, and, and their Board of Selectmen, they also have decided to continue their public hearing, because they were gathering information from all the residents last week. And, and it was interesting, because they did mention that, that over the years, a lot of the, the residents had made a lot of comments about this project, and questions they were, they were asking Eversource/ Nstar. And, and they were, and the, the chair indicated that the company has not responded to these, these individuals in over two years. So it was kind of like, you know, this is happening in other towns too, and, and I just think the communication is important. We're all in this together, and, and it's, it's affecting a lot of towns along the way. So I, I do appreciate that you've, you know, you've looked at the information. Marjorie, thank you for printing that all out. But I will, I will be in attendance April 12th, I guess is the next meeting that they're, they're going to have, so.
You haven't continued it yet, but you're, you're clairvoyant.
Yeah, but I, but that's what I, you know, I will be there, yes, so.
Okay.
But anyway, so I just wanted to make those comments, and, and just so you were aware that, that there's things happening in other towns as well, not just Holbrook.
I appreciate it. Thank you for that, for that update.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
I know that we, when we discussed it last week, there was, someone had floated the idea of a, of a bond-
Yeah.
-that we might be able to hold them to. Do we know if that's, is that a, are we able to, I mean, you're able to do that with private constru, you know, private construction, but this is more of a public works project, and I'm not sure if you're able to do that.
I don't see why we can't add it as part of the, because they're looking for permission or some type of permit from us, so.
Yeah, make that as, as an item of requirement, right. Yeah. So if we could just kind of discuss that, because I think that might be, you know, one avenue for us to be able to put some fears at rest, and be able to hold them accountable, and ensure that the lines of communication are open if we, if we have them bonded. So I think that that might be, you know, in, in, in a lot of opportunities, really, our only, our only avenue here.
April 12th, Town Council will be here.
Okay, all right, but maybe if they're prepared to answer that-
I'll email her.
-at April 12th. So, does anyone else have any questions on, on this? So, you know, as, as we said, we were going to continue this to ensure that all the parties are here. It'll be a publicly advertised meeting as well, but it'll be our next scheduled Selectmen's meeting.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to continue the public hearing on Eversource Energy, Walpole to Holbrook, 115 KV Reliability Project, until Wednesday, April 12th, 2017, at 7:20 p.m. in the Selectmen and All C. King Meeting Room at Holbrook Town Hall.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lee, all those in favor? Excellent, great, thank you. Next item, we're taking everything out of order here because of those public hearings, but the next item would be a discussion about changing the position of Town Treasurer/Collector. So this is something that we had on the town meeting warrant last year, which, which passed. And so this is a, it's a question that'll be on next week's, or in two weeks, April 4th ballot, that talks about, shall the, the town vote to have its elected treasurer/collector become an appointed treasurer/collector of the town? And this is, you know, something that, when we had our charter study group, it came up during that, and when you look around at, at various towns across the, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we, 74% of those municipalities actually have this as an appointed position. It's recommended by the Department of Revenue. It allows us to strategically plan for the future of the, of the town, and not biting on an election cycle for, for that individual, allowing for that stability. It also allows us to establish qualifications for requirements for that. So this is going to allow us, and not saying that various individuals who have served in this capacity over the years faithfully weren't necessarily qualified, but it gives us a standard that allows us to ensure that it's not an elected position, it's an appointed position, and we can affix certain standards to, to the individual we want to hold that, that position, whether it's, you know, it's, it's a college degree, it's an advanced degree, MBA, CPA, whatever, whatever it might be. So it gives us, I think, an opportunity to, to really have qualified people in, in that position, considering it's, Holbrook is a $40 million business. So if anyone's questioning why that's on the ballot, that's the reason why it is. And it's, it hasn't, it's not been slapped up and thrown up, it's not necessarily a me thing, or a Selectmen thing. We've had various committees over the years recommend this, and, and we feel that it's, it's the right option. But of course, you know, to do something of this nature, it has to be on the ballot. So on April 4th, in addition to the various candidates that are being sought to either be elected or reelected, we'll also have this ballot question. So I don't know if anyone has any, anything to add on this, or?
Well, when they, we first started talking about that, I agree with the idea that Mr., the gentleman that's in right now-
De Jacomo.
If he, if he ran, he should be allowed to serve, and he will be allowed to serve if he wins. But if this wins, and he wins, he's gone.
Mm-hmm.
Quite fair to him.
Yeah.
I don't think it's fair that you, you get this gentleman there, I think he needs three more years for retirement, and I-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not-
I know the reasons that people want to do it, but I don't think it's right for him.
Sure.
I know the reasons that people want to do it, but I don't think it's right for him as an individual to be sold out.
Anyone else?
I think there could be something put in there from the board, saying that, you know, because it would have to go to be signed up at the governor's office, I believe, and I know that other towns that have done it, there's been some lang...
Certified by the Secretary of State, I believe.
Yeah, but there's been some language that allows the treasurer-collector to be, to stay in the position, you know, until, you know, a three-year term.
Yeah, I can't recall exactly what it was.
Where was that done?
There was a sunset, I think, in various discussions that we've had.
But where was that...
There's been, I don't know exactly what town, but...
Yeah, but you would have had to... Where is it done? It can't be done after the fact, after the...
After the vote.
After the vote. We've already got it, the ballot's around, you know? I think it would have had them done before.
As I said, I think that there was discussion, I'm not sure if it was members of this particular board, or if it was members of a previous board, you know, where we talked about, you know, if the person is in the position, that they would be allowed to run out their current term. In this particular case, if the current treasurer actually wins, then that would be, I would assume, reading the intent, I think that that's what it would be, but we would have to get more clarification on that.
Either way, it would be coming in front of us anyway, though.
What was that?
It would be coming in front of us to make that decision, anyway, whether to...
Yeah, but if we have the election, and it was voted on to do it at the town meeting...
Yeah, but there's, I guess, the way I see it is that we don't necessarily have to have a committee involved to appoint anyone, so even though we have, so we have someone in place, I think it gives us the flexibility in the future. So, we can get more clarification on this for our next meeting, obviously, we'll know the results.
What's the date, the next meeting?
It would be after the election.
Yeah, that's not going to do this gentleman any good.
No, it won't, but there's, you know, there's... We have the ability to appoint the individual, and so that individual, you know, if this board, you know, wants it a certain way, wouldn't appoint anyone, but it would be in place, that it could be appointed. And as I said, there are, I think there were, there was discussion about if individuals are in the position, when and if they pass, that they would be able to see out the rest of their term, and it doesn't necessarily, I don't read it as this supersedes...
But his term will end that day.
But it doesn't supersede, if he wins, I don't see this as a supersede, because it said that the town, the town, shall the town vote to have its elected treasurer become an appointed treasurer-collector of the town? I don't read it as immediately, and it's a switch, I think that it gives the ability for us to appoint.
I believe, I believe it, Mark.
It's hard to say, it's only, I mean, it's a one-sentence ballot initiative, it doesn't talk about, you know, the individual, it doesn't talk about the timing, so I think that's up for discussion.
The way I'm going to read it is that the treasurer, if they both pass, the treasurer gets to finish out his three-year term, because...
That's why he's running, it's finished, that date.
But because us as a board, we can't, so we're going to have that position vacant while we go and do, put a committee together in a search to look for someone that could take us three, four months, because we still have to wait for everything to be certified. So, I would say that when the treasurer-collector is elected, he's going, in my eyes, I say he finishes out his three-year term, and during that term, we can start sabotaging...
There'll be a transition of some sort.
I feel the same way.
There'll be a transition, there has to be a transition, we can't go without a treasurer-collector after Election Day.
What if he decided to retire, you'd get one the next day.
Well, it'd only take us months.
Right.
Yeah, but you'd get someone to be there.
Temporary.
The other reason is that there's a check and balance between the treasurer and the accountant's office. Right now, they're watching out for each other to make sure that everything is on the yapp and up. And it leaves us in charge of the home team and the visiting team, recalling the shots. And I think that, I just don't think it's fair to get rid of them, and I know many people in this town that don't think it's right to eliminate the checks and balances. On the report for the, that we got, I think it was, when we went to the State House that day, do you remember, and they were recommending, they came through with a pamphlet, a booklet, two weeks later?
The compact agreement.
And they brought out, it sort of said, "Don't believe in the checks and balances, that isn't so." If it wasn't so, they wouldn't be, why would they put it in there? Because it is so, and I just think, myself, I'm not going to support it.
Well, I mean, I think that's why it's worthy of more discussion, you know, it's...
But there's no time left.
Department of Revenue recommends it, and the group that was part of the town charter that worked for two years, looking at how we operate as an organization, recommended it. So, I think that there's recommendations that are out there, and it's for us to be able to see it. I do believe that, you know, there's, a transition certainly needs to happen. I don't read it as the treasurer-collector, if he's elected in two weeks, is out of a job. I see that it allows us the flexibility for the future, and a lot of things that we do doesn't, don't necessarily happen immediately, they happen because we're planning for the future. And so, if and when, you know, the treasurer-collector decides to retire, you know, there's an opportunity here where we don't have to have an election to get someone, we have the ability ready to appoint. That's how I read it, and we can get more clarity, you know, based on it, but, you know, on the one-sentence of the ballot question, it's hard to...
The only way that we can get more clarity is, there has to be someone in the State House, the state that could tell you, Marjorie, if you were so inclined to make a call, to find out what, which rule supersedes.
It doesn't say effective immediately.
No, no, no. I think it might be written like that on purpose, to be vague, to allow us the opportunity to appoint, but not necessarily force us to appoint immediately, you know?
Yeah, so, other reason, if you go back to the checks and balances, probably there isn't anyone else here right now that would remember it, but we had that happen, where there was a stealing in...
Between the, yeah.
Between the two offices.
Collusion between the...
Not between them, one did it.
And the other covered it up?
I'm not sure of that, I'm not going to answer that, but I know that this individual, he had a business, and he was carrying the business with the town's money. So, I just think, I think that probably is more important than the fact that he's going to lose a job.
Yeah, yeah.
It is more important.
Oh, for sure.
For the town.
Oh, good point, so, it doesn't end here, obviously, we can put it on the agenda for next meeting.
You can't, though, if you don't find out and then have a meeting, but I, it's going to be...
But according to the way that's written, we have to post a job, as, if we're the one that's going to appoint, if this ballot question passes, we have to set that we're looking for someone, so we don't have to set it right away, and like I said at the beginning, my feeling is Paul's unimposed, so Paul, more than likely, will win. Well, Paul should continue his job for the next three years, because that's what the term is for, and that will give us time to formulate what type of job description we want for this person, what qualifications we want for this person to have, and then plan, you know, if Paul wants to stay one more year, two more years, or three more years, he's going to be the collector. So, then it's a matter of, now we're preparing for the future. There's nothing that says that we have to do it right.
I hope he is, but I don't think he is.
Yeah, so, the way I read it, is there's no language that says that, you know, the person will be terminated, it says we shall have the opportunity to appoint. It doesn't talk about, you know, defuncting the, you know, an elected position or anything like that. And, you know, this was, you know, reviewed by town council, and I'm not sure if this came up, you know, during those discussions, you know, what do we do if, you know, both happen? The treasurer wins and this ballot initiative passes. But I'm comfortable with, you know, it's going to be the status quo, everything is going to be as normal for the foreseeable future.
I'd be very comfortable with that, but we don't know.
I think if this was an issue like that, I think we would have talked about this a lot further before tonight, I mean, I think it would have came before this.
And we'll make it...
He hasn't done any, he hasn't complained.
No.
He's very complacent, to the point that, you know, too complacent, it's his own good.
We'll continue...
Maybe for hours, too.
We'll continue to keep it on there, and we'll find a resolution that makes sense, and certainly a call to legal, you know, in regards to this, it probably makes sense.
I wouldn't call Alloy, because he's already made one ruling on it. I'd like to hear it from the state.
You can do both, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion on this? No? All right, good. So, that being said, the election is, town election is the Tuesday, by law, first Tuesday of April, so that would be April 4th, so a lot of candidates are vying for your vote, so please get out and vote, and obviously, there's an important ballot question to decide. So, I know Benji isn't here, but if we could just have him do the regular procedure, you know, the week of voting, getting out the A-frame signs, and, you know, the various, you know, traffic signal sign that we have in town square, that would be, that would be great, just so we can have as high of a vote count as possible. All right, we already heard from Chief Smith. Director Hook, do you have anything further for us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Just a quick report tonight, I've been talking about next-generation 911 for the last couple of meetings. Today, the old 911 system was removed completely, so we are 100% on next-generation 911 now. It's going well, no major issues. And of course, as the state rolls out their text-to-911, wireless direct, stuff like that, we'll start to get those as well into our center. Just a quick update on Canton, Friday, we're going to begin weather-dependent antenna installations at some of the radio sites, so that's moving forward. And I just want to mention that the communications center has been very busy the last couple of days. Chief Smith mentioned the armed robbery. As we speak right now, they have a apartment fire over in Abington that they're dealing with, and last night, you probably know that they had a pretty significant fire over in Rockland. Now, Rockland is not one of the towns that we service, but three communities that we service went to Rockland, as well as, because we're the district control point for Norfolk County, and again, Rockland's not Norfolk County, but a lot of resources from Norfolk County went to assist the town with their, with their incident over there. So, I just want to recognize the dispatchers that worked last night, and they're on again tonight, it's been a busy couple of nights for them, so, other than that, I don't have anything to report, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Excellent. Anything for Director Hook?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, good work. Chief McFadden?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, just following up where Director Hook left off, as you're aware, busy evening last night in Rockland, the Holbrook Fire Department assisted there as well, we're currently, I believe, assisting at the scene of the fire, and it's ongoing at the moment in Abington. Personnel did a great job, including the dispatch personnel, the fire department personnel did a great job, and I'm sure they're doing a great job with this incident that's ongoing. Like to thank the board for their kind recognition of firefighter Toscano from Watertown. I'd also like to thank the Public Works Department, Holbrook Emergency Management, the Police Department, the Communications Department, as well as the members of the department. We did receive some requests from assistance from the Rockland, excuse me, for the Randolph Fire Department with equipment to assist with the wake that was held last evening, and all those other agencies were very helpful to us in accommodating Randolph Fire, as they attempted to assist Watertown Fire with that, so thanks all around there. And other more routine news, Engine 2, which is the newest engine the town received last August, is currently getting its first service interval, I'm expecting that back hopefully later this week, early next week, at the latest. I believe things are going well, haven't heard any negative reports. And finally, today, the department was inspected by the Department of, the Office of Emergency Medical Services for our ambulance license inspection progress, process. I was able to meet with the ambulance inspector early on in the morning, our EMS coordinator was with them throughout the day, and I got written full reports back that, good report overall, we'll get some more information, and I'll report to the board as well in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
When the piece of apparatus out for service, what do you do from a replacement standpoint?
So, we have, one of the reasons that we, that we have the number of apparatus in our inventory that we do is so that we can accommodate situations like this, where one piece of apparatus goes out of service, with the exception of a ladder truck, which due to the extremely high cost of those pieces of apparatus in today's modern-day age, a community like Holbrook would be really stretched financially to have two of those. But with the engines, we were able to manage, we still have two engines in service at present, and so it's not a strain on the department, so...
Good. Anything for Chief McFadden?
No. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Great, before we end the meeting, any other citizens' concerns? We can certainly take those at this point in time. No? Anything from the board that needs to be discussed, that wasn't on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I was just informed that June 30th would be the last day for the treasurer if this passed at the election. June 30th would be the treasurer's last day if this passes.
Okay, great, thank you for that. All right, with no other business before us, entertain a motion to close the Board of Selectmen meeting from March 22nd.
So moved.
Motion, seconded, all those in favor? All right, great, thank you very much, everyone, good night.